I'd like to call this meeting zoning and planning public hearing to order, and I would like to ask Councilman-
Recording in progress.
We'll start over. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I would like to ask Kelly Long, if she would, do the indication for us, please.
Father, thank you for this day, Lord, and the many blessings of it. Please be with us tonight as we take up zoning requests from the county. Help us to give the right credence to each one of these requests, Lord, and thank you for everyone here. We ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Tonight's public hearing is for the public comments on rezoning requests and identified the docket numbers CZ-2025-38, CZ-2025-40 through CZ-2025-42 and 44. Council members present tonight from my right are-
Kelly Long, District 18.
Ben Blunt, District 19.
Frank Farmer, District 22.
Bradley, District 26.
Alan Mitchell, District 23.
Liz Seaman, District 24.
Planning Commissioners are available to view tonight's stream of the meeting. Our Steve Bickel, Chair, Ken, excuse me, I forgot, I'm not sure, last civic. If I forget, next time, just, you know, just holler at me. John Holland, Deborah Manning, William Param, Janelle Phillips, Frank Hammond, Denise Franklin, James Woods. Also representing county staff are Joshua Hendricks, Todd Batshley, and Kinsley Loco. Tonight's hearings were advertised in the Greenwood Journal. In addition to the advertisement, public notice signs were posted on the properties, and detailed information was available on the Internet. In order to properly study all comments and give them due consideration, the hearing is being recorded as a matter of record. The procedure for the hearing of each case is as followed. Summary information about each case will be presented by the staff. The applicant, his or her representative, and anyone in favor of the rezoning request will be given the opportunity to speak for a combined total of 10 minutes. Those opposing the rezoning request will also be given the opportunity to speak for a combined total of 10 minutes. The county will not allow rebuttal from opposite sides. The Greenwood County Planning Commission will make recommendation for each case based on staff analyzing under regular meeting June 25, 2025. The Planning Commission analysts and recommendations along with the comment made at tonight's public hearing will be discussed at County Council Planning Development Committee, July 14, 2025. At that time, the committee will prepare the recommendations to the County Council. Additional written comments by the citizens may be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Office. Since passage of any zoning charge change will require three readings by County Council, a request may be denied on second reading. Tenanted dates for reading for tonight's requests are as follows: First reading, June 17; Second reading, August 19; Third reading, September 2, all of 2025. To assist Greenwood County in reducing roadside litter applicants could remove the public hearing notice signs within five days, the next five days. At this time, I would ask the staff of the Department of Zoning Administration to provide us with instructions regarding tonight's meeting and present their first case.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Tonight's public hearing is for informational purposes only and to provide all interested parties an opportunity to speak. No votes or recommendations will be made at this meeting. This meeting is the beginning of an approximately three-month-long process. Recommendations and votes will be made on the days provided by the chairman. All future meetings are open to the public and are encouraged to attend. There is no sign-up requirement to speak at tonight's public hearing. In the event the Planning and Development Committee refers a docket back to the Planning Commission for additional public comment, or the Planning Commission recalls a docket, another opportunity will be afforded to speak for those who use the sign-up sheet located in the rear of the room. Please be aware, this is only for those persons interested in becoming a party of interest in the event a docket is referred back to or recalled by the Planning Commission for additional public comment. As always, you may submit any letters, petitions, or similar information to the office of the zoning administrator, clerk to council, or directly to council members at any time.
All right. Our first docket, please.
Our first two dockets have been administratively withdrawn, and we'll start with docket CZ-2025-038. The property is located at 280 Rock Road in Greer. The applicant is Louis Paul Young. The 5.241-acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.61 miles southeast of the intersection of Batesville Road and Pelham Falls Drive and currently contains vacant land. This is a zoning of the surrounding area. The subject property outlined here is zoned RS Residential Suburban District and PD Plan Development District. The request is for AG Agricultural Preservation District. You can also see the surrounding properties' zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential and agriculture. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? Come up front and give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Louis Young. Is that okay? Okay.
Yes.
And address is 280 Rock, R O C K Road, Greer. Okay.
All right.
I'm just going to share a little bit of background. Our family's been in South Carolina since the mid-1800s. Primarily, we were in Lawrence County. It was the Tiller family and the Hans family. We're all farmers, and so when I finished my regular business 22 years ago and sold out my share in a family business, then I went and took the Clemson course for becoming a master gardener. And it really kind of excited me about what I learned in that process. And so I then found out about this other thing that was available down on the state level called ACRE, A-C-R-E, and it stands for Agribusiness Center for Research and Entrepreneurship. And it states very plainly in the brochure that they give you when you first start working with them, it says, "This program is designed for committed, hard-working entrepreneurs armed with a product they are invested in and passionate about." Well, that describes me pretty well on that. So then I wanted to know what I have to do in order to make the land that we have here. We've had this land for 45 years, 46, 47 years, actually, I think. And it says, "What qualifies as an agricultural use?" It says, "Agricultural real property means any tract of real property which is used to raise, harvest, or store crops." And this comes from the South Carolina Code Section 12-43-230 (A), and it says, "In the event at least 50% of a real property tract shall qualify as agricultural real property. The entire tract shall be so classified, provided no other business for profit is being operated their own." There is not going to be, and never has been, any other business operating for property on this particular piece. So I came in next, and I went to this application for amendment to official Greenwood County zoning map, and I made application on that. And so then, the next thing was that I went back to ACRE, and I said, "Okay, what's next?" And so they said, "Well, you really need to get into USDA." So I did that. I became involved with this new farmers program that is a wonderful opportunity that anybody can get into. It's not like you've got to have an educational background in any kind of horticulture or anything like that. It's all sorts of stuff that you can learn through this. There's different things that we were involved in thinking about what we'd like to do with the property as a family. Now, the name of the property is actually not, I mean, my name had to be on it because it has to be in one person's name, but the real name of the property, as we have designated it on the sign out in front of it, is "The Young Family You Know We Farm." And "you know" is the smallest word in the English language with all five vowels, and it means beautiful thinking. It comes from the Greek. So we thought what we'd come up with was a great idea, that we were going to raise two edible crops. We were going to raise tomatoes and zucchini. Well, I took care of fruit with tomatoes and vegetables with the zucchini. And we have a lot of Italian dishes that we all love as our family, and we have a lot that are Greek, and they're all based upon those two things, for one thing. So we knew that we had a market for that. The property adjoining where we are located is only accessed from Batesville Road, and you have to go in through the entrance to Pelham Falls subdivision to get to this property. But the property was there as our ownership probably five or six years before Pelham Falls was even thought about, because Rock Road's been there since colonial times. It's basically, it's a farm-to-market road, is what it was. And it was famous because of the fact that the Christopher family that owned the property, from whom we purchased it, had a gristmill on the other side of the property. And so we wanted to buy that side of the land, which was where we were going to do a subdivision, my brother and I were, called Chatsworth, and they didn't want to sell Chatsworth area for the 24 lots we were going to do unless we also bought the other side of the creek. Well, the problem there is that in order for you to be able to include that other 5.3 acres in the Chatsworth subdivision, you have to be able to access it from the front entrance of the subdivision. Well, the only way you could do that was if you built a bridge capable of bearing the weight of a fire engine across Rocky Creek to get to this 5.3 acres. So we didn't do anything with that except just hold on to it. And then in 2016, my wife and I decided that we were going to do something with it. We had worked in Ecuador as mission, working with indigenous tribespeople, and we learned a lot about different kinds of planting and all kinds of different crops that we'd never been exposed to. Came back here and decided what we were going to do is we were going to take this and make it into a family farm. So we divided it into three sections, thinking that was the right thing to do. I have one son and a daughter, and all these people right over here is all part of my family and the farming community that we're going to work with. And so I was saying, "Okay, I'll keep one lot, you get one lot as my son, you get one lot as my daughter, and that's fine." Well, it turned out then, after I had already divided the property and given one of the lots away, that was when I found out that the zoning required that you had five acres for it to be zoned agriculture. Well, I'd already been given a farm number by the South Carolina Farm Bureau, so I didn't realize that was part of it. But that's why I'm here today, is to say, "Well, we're pretty well invested into this thing with what we're trying to do." So we are looking at being a plant, and I'm going to specify P-L-A-N-T. I'm not into, I'm not into derying, I'm not into animals of any kind, I don't like big dogs and cats, to be honest with you. I'm not interested in having any of that stuff on the property. What I'm looking for is two things. Edible plants on one side of it, and the other thing is things that we would grow and sell to greenhouses, such as, we have been raising in our family unit dahlies for probably 30 years. We have a wonderful group of people that we have been buying triploids, which are the dahlias that have the three sets of petals in them. Second thing is hostas. We've probably gotten, I don't know, maybe 15 to 18 different brands of types of hostas we've already raised up and divided and sold to people. Third thing is the two woody-stem things. One of them is Japanese maples, and we've been doing that for 15 years, maybe longer than that now, I think about it. And the other one is camellias. That's the latest thing we've been doing, and we know we've been doing that for 18 years. So the big thing was the camellias because of the fact that we have got, where we have been living, we'd already done 2.8 acres, and that was the primary flowering plant that we had. So we were very fortunate in that we were able to get in contact with Young, well, he's not young anymore, but Sidney Frazier. And Sidney is the chief horticultural person, our vice president of horticulture at Milton Place Gardens, and that's the oldest landscape gardens in the whole United States. So he is our entrepreneur assistant planner for what kind of camellias we're going to grow, because what you grow down there in Charleston may be very, very different in terms of when it blooms up here. And you can get snapped real bad with a late chill, and you don't get any blooms off of them. So he's going to work with us in order to do that, help pick camellias. And we're using a company out of North Carolina called Camto Nurseries in order to buy the initial stock. And then we, since we get all that in place, we qualify for additional USDA programs that are available to us to assist us in learning how to use more advanced techniques of planting than what we did when our farm family started back in the 1800s. So that's the basic oversight that we're dealing with right here. And then I've got the rezoning brochure that I got from the zoning office here, and so they set everything up for us so I could come tonight and just answer any questions y'all might have now.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Paul?
Mr. Young, you know, generally, I'm in favor of agricultural districts. My last name's Farmer, duh. But I was just handed a document, and it says that you have changed your plans from building one home, two homes, three homes, five, 10, a church retreat, et cetera, et cetera. Can you just speak on that, like where you are? Because whoever wrote this, they're obviously concerned that it will not be used for agriculture and may be used for something else.
Well, I just told you, that's what I'm going to do with it. And all I'm going to tell you is I don't lie, so therefore, that's what I plan to do with it.
I'm tracking. I'm just kind of wondering how you got to here, basically.
How I got here?
Yeah, to, from, going from building a bunch of homes to the agricultural district that you're trying to do.
Oh, because once you divided it up into three lots, and I was giving one, as I said, to each child of mine, my son and my daughter, and then my wife and I are going to keep one. And we, although I was going to do agricultural planning on it, but then we found out after I had gone through the Clemson program, that I could go and apply for a Farm Bureau number, which is what we received in July of '24. So that's how I ended up here, was because then, when we gave to my son and his wife the first of the size lots that they got, then it turned out that we reduced the total acreage under my name by half an acre, which meant it fell below the five acres that are required to do the urban agribusiness. And so that's why I am here, is because I brought it back underneath my name. I took back the lot. They were very gracious about it. They gave me my lot back, and they said, "Okay, what you going to do?" And I said, "Well, we're going to now go and see what we have to do next." And that's when I went down and applied for the zoning.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Councilman Mitchell?
Mr. Young.
Sorry. Mr. Young, the documents that we've been handed show a lot of flooding on the property. Will you be able to control that and be able to make it successfully into an agricultural site?
Yes, we shall. There's not a problem with that. There's what they call the high-water mark. That means that when a river or a creek or a stream overflows, there's usually trash or debris that's floating on the surface, and as it recedes, then it leaves what's referred to in that term. It's where the water got to, but then as it recedes, all the trash gets left along the bank. So you can see exactly where the high-water mark is going to be. And in the 40-plus years that we have had it, we have never seen it come up like it did in Helene. It just was unheard of for it to come up that high. So the whole bottom part of it is just like the Nile Delta, or it's like the delta down in Mississippi, that when it floods over, it brings in good things into the soil. And then we've also been doing what they refer to as amending the soil, which means you put in natural ingredients, because we're going organic. It means we're not putting fertilizers in that are going to run off into the stream. We're not going to put anything on there that would be hazardous to the environment. So you get what you refer to there as a, it's called, there's a 35-foot buffer is what it's referred to in a floodplain, and you're not allowed to plant or you can't develop anything in that property. But the rest of it is perfectly capable of doing that. So I've got neighbors that have lived there for 20 years that have told me that in the 20 years that they have lived there, that they have never seen the water come up as high as it did for Helene. So the way I'm looking at it is, we haven't Helene very often, we pray, but if it does, it's nothing but agriculture that's going to deal. It won't hurt anything else, it's just that we lost that crop that year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for staff. Are there any code violations on this property?
There currently is an active code violation that is going through the enforcement process under the Land Development Department.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
If we have any time left. We have three minutes if anybody wants to speak for this application. Anybody wants to speak in favor? Okay. We'll go to those who want to speak against this document. If you've got 10 minutes, you can, any way you want to do it, I need you to name the address, and we've got you 10 minutes.
Jen Oslin, 126 Riverway Drive in the Pelham Falls subdivision, and that's Greer, 29651. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I serve on the Pelham Falls HOA board, representing over 435 homes in our community, and I'm here tonight to urge you to deny the rezoning request submitted by Louis Young for 280 Rock Road in Greer. This property is located along the banks of Rocky Creek, near its junction with the Henry River. It is a floodplain primarily, and I'm glad that Mr. Young brought up the kinds of crops he's even interested in growing. Things with very high nitrogen needs, tomatoes, zucchinis, maple trees, organic or not, those kinds of supplements and ag materials don't belong in our waterways, as we've seen even at Hartwell, with what's gone on since Helene and the washout. Our board has stood with residents for over a decade in opposing development on this fragile site. Mr. Young has already clear-cut the land, leading to severe erosion and dangerous flooding near the adjacent properties, even in moderate rainfall. This was not an isolated Helene event. This is something that's a regular problem and difficulty on Rock Road. We have also dealt with debris piles burning and left unattended. Building materials have been left on the property to decay. And as the board member responsible for the maintenance of our community's 1 1/4-mile Riverside walking path, I have worked closely with Clemson University's Water Resource Program, as well as Greenville Soil and Water Conservation District. Their advice is always the same: mimic Mother Nature. Greenville County's Own Land Development Manual, which is excellent, states on page 33, "It is crucial to establish, nurture, and maintain a 30- to 100-foot riparian buffer. These vegetated zones are not just attractive landscaping, they are essential. They filter pollutants, reduce erosion, slow storm runoff, support biodiversity, and stabilize creek banks." Unfortunately, Mr. Young has already damaged this sensitive area. He has removed very large overstorey mature trees. He has cleared understory vegetation, and he has even scraped his property with heavy machinery. These actions directly oppose Greenville County's own best practices. The damage that has been done on the banks of Rocky Creek will take years to repair. I respectfully ask that you deny this rezoning request. Help us to protect our homes and the beauty of these natural waterways. The natural systems that sustain them depend upon all of you. I'd also like to submit for the record a petition with over 250 signatures from Chatsworth and Pelham Falls communities, as well as a photo history that's got, I think all of you were emailed this prior, but wanted to submit that for the record. Thank you so much for your time and for serving.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Corvin, 107 Chatsworth Road in Greer, in the Chatsworth subdivision. I am the Chatsworth Neighborhood HOA president, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 28 years. I lived in Pelham Falls prior to that. Chatsworth itself is a neighborhood of 19 homes, just immediately to the south of the subject property. We moved into this area because of the quality of the homes and the beauty of the natural area, you know, around this property. So my wife and I, and our neighbors in Chatsworth, we oppose the property rezoning to agriculture due to the likely impact it will have on our home values and the quality of life. The property, as you see, is sandwiched between our two neighborhoods along a narrow strip of the Rocky Creek, and it's considered by many to be the 25th lot of the Chatsworth subdivision. Zoning the subject property agricultural will have a detrimental impact on our neighborhood now and well into the future. Chatsworth itself has restrictive covenants established, as does Pelham Falls, I understand, that restrict the size and type of home that may be built in the neighborhood, and an active architectural review board to review and approve any new homes or substantial improvements in the neighborhood. In fact, Louis was part of that board for a long time. The board's goal is to prevent anything tending to distract or, of the appeal, or to reduce the property values in the neighborhood. And changing the zoning of this property to agricultural will definitely do just that. Do the potential structures, the animals, equipment storage allowed on agricultural use lands. So I urge you to deny the rezoning request submitted by Louis Young. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi. My name is Derek Simons. I'm a property owner in Pelham Falls. That's actually a picture on the screen there of my plot in green. It's at One Shade Tree Court, and it has about 130 feet of adjoining property line with Louis Young's property in the back we've all been speaking about. I'll try to be brief. We do have one other fellow who'd like to get up here. I think when I look at this, there's two largely separate but important perspectives to look at this through, lens to look at through. The first is intent. Louis spoke to his intent. Many of us who have witnessed more than 15 years of activity on the property, and our own property, in some cases can go to great depth to intent, but it is opinion. Second, and probably more relevant, is full consideration for what a rezoning of this floodplain could allow, in the broadest terms, for decades into the future and across multiple potential landowners. You've already heard our collective opinion to some extent on his intent, our HOA representatives from both sides. But for me, it boils down to witnessing over 15 years of this type of activity, both in paperwork, the various plot rezonings and plans submitted to the county, but also in physical work that has been consistently focused on construction of one or more residences. For me, that boils down to, it's just not okay to use an agricultural rezoning as a workaround to build a residence in a floodplain circumventing your oversight. Regardless of the owner or anyone's intent or opinion of intent, an agricultural rezoning has a broad and long-lasting implication for this floodplain and the communities that surround it. Given that this, excuse me, given that this property is mostly floodplain, it is clear that this land isn't prime farmland. I think you need to consider the impact of any possible agriculture activity, however egregious and up to the limit of what the zoning law would allow. I'm not a farmer, but the obvious elements of agriculture that require clearcutting and grading for planting, as well as the presence of livestock, have untenable implications as it relates to soil retention, erosion, stabilization of the waterway, not to mention the property values of the surrounding residencies and residential zones. I request that this zoning committee and the county council deny this rezoning application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Three minutes? We've got three minutes. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Pastore. I live at 120 Pentland Court in Chatsworth, and I have lived in that neighborhood for over 25 years. Our home sits right across the street, right across the creek, with full view of the property that's being requested for zoning at 280 Rock Creek Road. This zoning request will harm the people on Shade Tree Court, the people on Pentland Court, and the people on Haddon Lane. The property in question is not prime farmland. The Youngs have no intent of using this property for agricultural purposes. The rezoning request that stands before you tonight is a means to bypass Greenville County regulations while constructing multiple structures. According to Section 516 of Greenville County zoning ordinance, it is intended to, quote, "preserve prime farmland for agricultural and forestry uses." This 5.2-acre property is surrounded by suburban residential homes and has no agricultural or forestry history. A significant portion lies within a floodplain, which makes it unstable for agricultural products. The property borders seven homes on Shade Tree Court and six homes on Pentland Court and Haddon Lane in Chatsworth. The recent clearcutting has almost certainly caused negative impact to property values and the quality of life. The county planning group, despite earlier this year, has no intent of using this property and land agriculturally. Historically, in 2009, Louis and his brother Steve proposed the Chatsworth enclave and proposed five homes to be built in this floodplain, which the council that you're studying on today rejected. He has also submitted to the county a trailer home on 16 by, that's 16 by 22, on stilts. In August of 2024, he claimed he wanted to build homes for his family and a friend, and most recently, with the agricultural designation, he says he wants a house, a barn, and a shed. AG allows for many uses, including family home, bed and breakfast, and certain agricultural uses. Mr. Young's various plans do not align with any of those. Evidence suggests he is aimed at exploiting agricultural exemptions from the county. Greenville County's MS permit and stormwater ordinance, number 67, land disturb exempts land disturbing activities for forestry and agriculture. Mr. Young's claim of agriculture would enable him to avoid the permits, evade stormwater controls, and build multiple structures without the county's oversight. Mr. Young's intent was rebuked by the county planning on February 21, 2025 in an email. Mr. Young's intent, quote, "appears to be inconsistent..." Mr. Young's intent, quote, "appears to be inconsistent with agricultural uses. A violation and stop order ordinance were issued." His pattern of behavior over the years repeatedly, he repeatedly misrepresents his attentions on the property. His true goal appears to circumvent zoning rules, build a non-agricultural compound on the county. Can I keep going? Yeah. Two minutes. Not even two minutes. The Youngs' property does not meet the criteria for AZ zoning, and the intentions do not align with the goals, and we re, we think the entire request is an effort to sidestep, not sidestep regulations, of genuine agricultural endeavor. We respectfully request you deny this zoning attempt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Time is up on this docket, so we'll move to the next.
Our next docket is CZ-2025-040. The property is located at 593 Old Huntsbridge Road in Greenville. The applicant is Herbert Edward Mercer III of H. Edward Mercer LLC. The 1.48-acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.58 miles southeast of the intersection of Old Huntsbridge Road and Old McElhaney Road, and currently contains a vacant structure. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. The subject property outlined here is zoned S1 Services District. The request is for RS Residential Suburban District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the areas surrounding the subject site. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is the applicant or is her representative here?
Chairman Ray. Yeah, I'm gonna stay, but can the rest of my family leave? They've got other things to do.
Of course.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't want to interrupt until I found out they could leave.
See ya. Go ahead, name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, Edward Mercer, 56 Oak Crest Court, Greenville. So I won't be long. First of all, thank you all for serving. I know you all take a lot of abuse. Appreciate all of you all spending your Monday night doing this. So I'll keep it short. I bought this property 10 years or so ago. Kind of held it, had a young man, who I believe his brother lives next to it, want to purchase it to build a single-family home. We found out that it was zoned S1, and so to build a home, it's got to be our, whatever the, whatever's surrounding it. So this is the first time I've ever done this, first time I've been here. Everything, if you do zoom way out on the map, it's the only spot that's S1 in kind of, you know, several mile radius. And so I was told, somebody did say that the S1 is sort of a diamond in the rough, but I think from my understanding, people, the council or the county generally likes to kind of have everything the same. So that's sort of the basics of it. Questions?
So you just want to build the one home?
One home, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I'm assuming that's, if you're designated as that, as the one home without, is that how that works? Like if it?
If the property is rezoned RS, it could be subdivided, meeting the minimum lot size of, it can't be? Oh, so there's not enough to subdivide it? Scratch everything I just said. There's not enough acres to subdivide the property? They'd be, they'd be able to have the one, one block.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, just curious about what's the history? How on earth did that little S1 get in the, in the middle, in the middle of the RS?
It was originally zoned S1 in 1973. If you go back on aerials, it does look like it used to be a commercial or service use in the past.
I think it was a sawmill at one point. There's a little barn on it that there's still sawdust around. But that, one of the neighbors told me it was years ago was a sawmill.
Any other questions?
Council Mitchel.
Get the follow-up on that. Was the whole area S1, or just that one parcel?
It was just that one parcel.
And everything else was residential? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a comment, but I don't know who the person was that owned the property when they got it S1, but they must have been pretty high on the hog, because that is kind of in the middle of nowhere when it comes to that kind of zoning. So just, I think that's why everybody's asking the question, so, thank you.
And around it, there's some new houses you'll see, and some mobile homes, and then, you know, some old, like, different families. But, you know, almost on the edge of the county, so it's, it's, you know, makes sense to me.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have anybody else speaking on behalf of this docket number? Seeing none, do we have any speaking against this docket? Anybody speaking against? Seeing none? We'll move to the next docket, please.
Our next docket is CZ-2025-041. The property is located at 20 Old Augusta Road Extension and Augusta Road in Piedmont. The applicant is Robert Mitchell Gunter of River Rock Engineering LLC for DAM Moonville LLC. The 2.98-acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.29 miles south of the intersection at Augusta Road or Highway 25 and the 185 interchange, and currently contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. The subject property outlined here is zoned C1 Commercial District and C2 Commercial District. The request is for S1 Services District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is RV and boat storage. This is the subject site and photo showing the areas surrounding the subject site. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is the applicant or is her representative here? If you'll come up and give us your name and number for the, name and number, name and address. I've done that before. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. The name is Robert Mitchell Gunter with River Rock Engineering. I'm representing Jimmy Mackus, who's sitting in the audience right now, at 20 Old Augusta Road in Greenville, South Carolina. So, members of the council, thank you so much for allowing me to represent Jimmy and speak with you tonight. Jimmy is a member of the community. You know, he's not somebody coming from outside. This is not necessarily an investment property. He's the owner of the restaurant adjacent to this site, to the clock. I don't know how many of y'all have been to the clock in Moonville, kind of a staple in the community. We reached out to Councilman Fant, sorry you couldn't make it tonight, to see if he had any concerns ahead of time. I don't want to speak on his behalf. He didn't have any concerns in the correspondence that we had with him, but we certainly wanted to talk it over with him ahead of time and make sure that nobody in the community had any issues before we came and represented to y'all tonight. We are seeking to rezone the subject parcel from a combined split zoning of C2 and C1. There's a very, very, I don't know if you can see it on this map, there's a very small portion of C1 right next to the roadway on that private road. So it's actually a split zoning of C2 and C1. We want to rezone all of that to S1, because Jimmy would like to proceed with his proposed boat and RV storage development. He's seen a lot of, a lot of demand in the area. He thinks that it's going to drive a lot of business to the Dollar General and his own restaurant nearby. Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, you sometimes see people with boats and RVs in your parking lot. Definitely want to give people a little bit more of an option to store them in the area. I think it's going to benefit all the surrounding businesses. We don't believe it's a significant departure from the existing zoning surrounding the property. As you can see on the zoning map, to the north, to the east, those are all S1 as well. All the other zonings, we don't believe this would be an intense impact on these other properties, what they already do. We also, looking at Greenville County's future land use map, we don't believe that rezoning to S1 would be a significant departure from the mixed employment center use as forecasted, and we believe that this would bolster economic activity in the area. We're glad we have the opportunity to address the council, standing by for your questions and concerns, and just appreciate your time.
Have any questions for the applicant? Is that the, Mr. and Ms. Green's property?
Yes.
That, yes.
Yes, sir.
My wife took Ms. Green home from work, from Fort Showes for years when she was, she was teaching, she had to be 187 then, so. So that's right beside the dollar store?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Do we have any speakers for this docket? Any other speakers for this docket? Seeing none, do we have any against this docket? Any speakers against this docket? Any speakers against this docket? Seeing none, let's move to the next docket.
Our next docket tonight is CZ-2025-042. Property is located on Old Bramlett Road in Greenville. The applicant is Trista Chasson for Four Star USA Real Estate Group. The 121.7-acre subject property consists of one parcel, is located approximately 0.18 miles west of the intersection of West Blue Ridge Drive and Old Bramlett Road, and currently contains a single-family residential development under construction. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is zoned FRD, Flexible Review District. The request is for FRDMC, Flexible Review District Major Change, and RMA, Multifamily Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states the proposed land use is single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing development boundary in order to transfer a small portion of the property to a neighbor. An approximate 0.04-acre portion of the review district would be rezoned to RMA, Multifamily Residential District, before being deeded over to an adjacent property owner. No other changes are proposed to the existing requirements established under the statement of intent for this development. This is the subject site, and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, so it would be this outline and shaded portion, that's the 0.04 acres that would be rezoned to RMA, but since that would technically be a boundary change to the FRD, that's why it would also be a major change in this case. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Is the applicant here? Name and address for the record, please.
Tricia Chason. I live at 11 Columbia Circle in Greenville, representing Four Star. We're the developers of Village Grove. During our, well, after we were rezoned, we went through the plan review process, and Greenville Water required us to make a water connection to Appaloosa Drive. Our original intent with the existing encroachments onto our property was to have the property owners remove them or assist them in removing their structures from our property. This was an undeveloped site for a number of years, so, you know, we certainly understood why some of the property owners kind of pushed back into it. But during, during plan review, Greenville Water wanted us to make a water connection. We identified a piece of property a little bit further up Appaloosa Drive, where we had room to put the water line in without impacting the existing residents. And in our negotiations to secure the easement, Mr. Swisher, who we secured the easement from, pointed out that his mother lives on this property, and her above-ground pool and shed encroached into the property, and she really wanted to keep it. So we agreed that in exchange for the easement and some other considerations, that we would also allow her to keep the pool, and we would deed the property over, not knowing at the time that we would have to come back through a major change process. I'm not sure how many of you were on the council when Village Grove got approved, or the three times we tried to get it approved before that, but I just missed you and wanted to come back. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Not really a good question, but just thank you for clarifying, because I think that'll, obviously, you know, the headache that you went through, and that a lot of passionate people live in that area, so I think there'll be a lot of clarification for them on what you're trying to do. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, and another thing to point out is we have mass graded. We're working on installing utilities now. The wall has already been constructed, so we know that this property line allows for the right setbacks for the pool, and our wall, and our buffers, and everything like that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We have anybody speaking, anybody else speaking in favor of this docket? Anyone else? Seeing none? Anyone against this docket? Anyone speaking against this docket? Seeing none, let's move to the next.
Docket 43 was withdrawn by the applicant, so we'll move on to docket CZ-2025-044. This is to amend Article 8, Section 851, ESDPM, environmentally sensitive district, Paris Mountain intent, of the Greenville County Zoning Ordinance. Shown in red and struck through is the current wording of Section 851. The proposed amendment would replace the current wording with the text shown in black. Here you see an aerial image of the ESDPM boundary. And here you see the ESDPM zoning and zoning of the surrounding area. Mr. Chairman.
So what do we do with this? We, this, the counties?
We can ask if we have speakers.
I guess. Do we have any speakers?
I'll speak, because I was, I wasn't really planning to. Thank you for your time tonight. I just, I wrote this, so I apologize if it's not.
Name and address before you start.
My name is Casey Jo Cooperman. Sorry, I live at 115 Seattle Slough Lane in Greenville in District 19.
Thank you.
Hold on, I'm so sorry, I just lost it. This is how good I am at this, right? I apologize. Okay. Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. Over the past few months, I've had hundreds of conversations with residents as part of the effort that grew into Safe Paris Mountain. What I heard over and over were that, was that people aren't against all growth, they just want smart, well-placed, and well-informed growth that respects the land they love. These proposed changes to the ESDPM zoning ordinance are exactly the kind of response that shows that the county has listened. They don't, this doesn't stop development, it guides it, it clarifies expectations, it offers protections for steep slopes, natural habitats, heritage trees, and safe setbacks. They promote good design and limit ambiguity, not just for residents, but for the developers and planters too. The additions around lighting density, tree preservation, and ridge line protection are not extreme. They're thoughtful, they reflect the realities of this terrain and the values of this community. This is about protecting what makes Paris Mountain special, not just for today, but for decades to come. Thank you for considering these refinements and for giving citizens a voice in shaping the future of this irreplaceable part of our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers for this docket number? Any other? For or against? Seeing none? We'll move on to the next, which is? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.